Good morning. I'm Kaitlin with Wirecraft Daily News and I'm here with Dr. Julie Turner, who is running for school board chair. Good morning.
Good morning, Kaitlin.
Thank you for coming in this morning. So I have a few questions for you. The first question is, what is your vision for Dothan City Schools over the next five to 10 years?
First of all, thank you for having me. And I want to start out by saying, um, this is not about me. This is about giving the schools back to Dothan City, to citizens. And so the first thing is, I'd like to break that down from five to 10 years to three years. Because research shows that it takes three years to make systemic change, to earn trust back. So I would first look to those three years to earn the trust back from the citizen. And by doing that, we would have to be completely transparent and make our meetings 100% transparent. And that means making every decision that we make in front of the people. And have, doing the people's work in front of the people, not having executive sessions except, except.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Only, only have an executive session when it includes someone's good name and character, and when it has to do with students. Otherwise, we are doing it in front of the people and doing the people's work in, in, in front of the people. And earning the trust back, communicating with commissioners, which I've already started to do, communicating with the, the Chamber of Commerce, and including the community, making sure that the community members have a pathway in which to speak with them. Um, and then we could look at the five-year plan, which should be not a pretty plan that we make on a, on a shelf, but a living document. And then work with our superintendent to make sure that we're working our five-year.
How do you plan to ensure that all students receive a high-quality education regardless of their background?
Well, first, we have to acknowledge that we have a very diverse population across Dothan, and that we have a lot of talent across Dothan in every neighbor. And we should offer everything in every school. So we have disadvantaged students. We have students who are wealthy, students who are poor, students who have and students who are not, students who are disabled, and students who are very abled. Um, and so we have to address all of those needs. When you decide to serve in a public school, you are serving all the children. And so we have to make sure that our superintendent is hiring people who are willing and ready to serve all of the students. And when that happens, and you have people who have a heart for students, and that's where it all begins. I could always, you know, being a teacher, being someone in administrative positions, being someone at a state position, I can teach someone how to teach school, but I can't teach someone how to love kids. So we have to focus really on people who have a track record of loving students and having a heart for students.
What do you believe are the most important issues facing Dothan City Schools and how do you plan to address them?
Okay. We have a culture right now in Dothan City Schools of retaliation. And I talk to teachers, students, employees, parents, who feel that if they speak out and of the problems that we're retaliated against, and we have to change that culture. And the way that we need to do that is we need to partner with our new superintendent to, to change that, and make it that that will no longer be accepted. And then we are also hemorrhaging teachers. Teachers are leaving us to go to jobs that pay less, and they're having to drive further. Um, we still have some excellent teams, but they are there because Dothan City Schools are ingrained in their, in their spirits, ingrained in their heart, and just willpower. And that's what we still have. And we have to work hard to make sure that we keep those teachers and, and employees. So, um, hemorrhaging employees. Now, there, there is a nationwide teacher shortage, but we have a problem that surpasses, and we need to.
How do you plan to support students who are at risk or face challenges such as learning disabilities, poverty, or language barriers?
Well, we actually are facing that on two different fronts now, because we are looking at losing some of the federal funds for our English learning population right now. That just came out last week. Um, so we're looking at that at a local level and a federal level. Um, so one thing that we are going to have to do is we are going to have to look at our budget and make sure that our budget is always putting students first, always. Our budget, it, it's a large budget because of the size of school system that we are. However, we're operating at a, at a deficit, and we need to, to cut. And we are very top-heavy. So we are going to need to look at our budget and see where we can cut, and make sure that that money gets back to the school, make sure that that money gets back to the students. And not only that, we need to make sure that teachers have the resources that they need. We have so many teachers spending their own money. And I know, because I spend a lot of my own, um, in the classroom. Um, I would love to say in a perfect world that they would never have to spend their own money in the classroom. We would never in a million years ask, um, let's say, a, a fast food employee to bring their own spatula to work, or to bring their own hamburger wrapper to work. But here we are asking teachers to bring their own crayons to work, to bring their own paper to work. That's unacceptable. And so as a board, as a board chairman, I would like to see us look at the budget. And people who aren't in education, who have, who don't have education administration experience, do not realize that there are certain budgeting funds that can only be spent in certain ways. But if we look at our resources, and we're smart with how we spend our resources, we can lighten the load on our teachers. And we can serve those populations, those marginalized populations, in ways that would lighten the load on ours, on our teachers, and also serve those, those marginalized.
How will you promote diversity and inclusion within the school system?
Well, we have a very diverse population. And I believe that when you raise your hand to serve in a public school, nobody forces you to serve in a public school. And there's so many options for you, if you want to be a teacher, to, to be an educator, um, to serve as an employee. And, and when I say educator, let me explain. I mean, the bus drivers, the custodians, the lunchroom workers, um, the people that work in the front office, the nurses, the counselors, every adult in that school has the opportunity to be an educator, because we do not know who those children are going to form a relationship with. So they're all educators. Um, and so when you decide to go into service in a public school system, you raise your hand to serve all of the children. And so as a school board chairman, I know that you have to serve all of the children in all of this, in all of the districts across Dothan, and realize that we have so much talent. You know, if we ignore any population, we might be missing out on the next Ben Carson. And we can't do that. We have to make sure that we are serving all of the students in all of the districts. Or we might be missing out on talent that we never.
How do you plan to improve student achievement, especially in areas where performance may be lagging?
Well, I have a unique experience in this, because I did work at the State Department of Education. And my first assignment at the State Department of Education was to develop or help develop the accountability program, which means we worked on the formulas, the indicators. So I understand what we are looking at when we're looking at data. Um, and I still, to this day, although I've been retired for a couple of years, um, I still look at Dothan City Schools data, and I know exactly what it means. One of the things that Dothan is known for, even when I was in the classroom, we don't stick with curriculum long enough for teachers to get familiar with it, and long enough for students to get used to it. So students do not know what to expect. And we just throw good money after bad to, to buy new curriculum. So one thing that I would advocate for and work with our new superintendent with is consistency in our curriculum. Let's give something time to work before we decide to, um, change curriculum midstream. Let's, let's give our teachers time to learn the curriculum, give, give our students time to expect something, um, knowing what to expect, because that's one thing that teach, that students need is consistency. And one thing that teachers need is consistency. So, you know, study the data. You, you study data for three years at least to see trends. And then, um, study that data to see a three-year trend, and then give the teachers time with the curriculum to actually learn the curriculum, and the students' time to expect the curriculum before we change.
What strategies will you implement to ensure that students are adequately prepared for post-secondary education or the workforce?
We do a really excellent job with this. Um, I will bring up that when I was in Dothan City Schools, one of my jobs was, um, the graduation rate. We were not great at dropout and graduation rate. We had a graduation rate of 18%, and within a year, we got that down to, um, 0.49%, which was three students over two years, which is amazing. And we did that by building relationships with parents, with students, with our community. And let me tell you, we got faith-based organizations involved. We included the community. We, we included the community. We included, um, our Chamber of Commerce. We included our commissioners. We got everyone involved. If someone wanted to be involved, we got them involved, and that's how we got our graduation count. So one of the strategies is to work with everyone in Dothan who wants to be involved. And we already have a lot of churches involved in our school system. That's the first thing we would do. Um, the other thing is, um, building relationships in the school. You have to know those students, and you have to know, and you, you can't wait until they're senior. Um, you have to start building those relationships in the eighth grade, the ninth grade. Start doing goal-setting with them. And we did that. Um, but also, we have to keep building Dothan Tech. We do a great job with Dothan Tech, and we have to continue to do that. Um, we have to continue to, um, increase our advanced placement programs. We have to continue to build our dual enrollment. Dual enrollment saves parents money. Dual enrollment saves, um, students time in college. So we have to continue to build all of those programs.
How do you plan to support teachers in the classroom?
Supporting teachers is, is near and dear to my heart. I love teachers. I still have teachers I taught with that are still in the classroom. And I will tell you, the first thing that needs to happen is teachers need to be able to communicate with their board members. That is something that has been lost. It, well, it's been lost. I don't know where it got lost, but it got lost since I've been at the State Department. I was at the State Department for almost 12 years. And there is a board policy that I would like to revisit with my fellow board members when I am elected. And, um, it makes it impossible for teachers to be able to speak to their board members. That's something I never experienced as a teacher. I was always able to speak to my board members and not fear retaliation. That is something that a teacher should never have to fear, is to be able to speak to their board members and not fear retaliation. That's the first thing. We need to look at our board policy, revisit some of our policies about teachers being able to speak and communicate with their warden. And teachers need to know that their opinion matters. They are the professionals. And then also, we need to let teachers do what they went to school to do, and that is teach. They are not cookie cutters. And we do not need to put them in the classroom and expect them to be cookie cutter teachers. We need to allow them to teach and do, I mean, many of these teachers have gone to school seven, eight, nine years. And we need to allow them to do what they went to school to do. So it has been my experience. I've worked with every system at the State Department. I worked with every system in the state. And the systems that allow their teachers to be teachers have higher scores than we do consistently. And I think one of the strategies that we are missing in Dothan City is to allow their teachers to be creative and to teach. Now, I'm not saying, let's just go wild. I'm not saying that. But I am saying, let them be the professional.
How will you advocate for additional funding or resources for Dothan City Schools, especially in the face of financial challenges?
We do have financial challenges. We have had a lot of corruption in Dothan City Schools. I don't mind saying it, and I will say it to anyone. We need to, number one, address that. I mean, putting our heads in the sand and saying, no, it's not there, it's not there, is not a strategy. Um, we have had conflicts of interest, um, contracts. We need to address those. We need to be completely honest. We need to have integrity in everything that we do. And we need to, um, get our affairs in order, and then be able to go to the commission and say, we have our affairs in order. We are being good stewards of what we have. We are spending wisely. We have cut where we can cut. We are looking at our resources, and we are spending our resources well. Now, will you assist us? I've spoken to some commissioners, and they have said, once you get your affairs in order, we'll be glad to help. And that's what we need to do. Now, there are, there are grants out there. But I don't think that we need to spin our wheels and go searching for other grants until we get our affairs in order. We need to be transparent and accountable. Dothan citizens need to know that their tax dollars are being spent with integrity and honesty, and they need to know where every dollar is. We also need to make sure that our check registers have vendors' names on them. They need to know where every cent goes. And we need to be open and honest, and we need to bust open the books, let them see where every dollar is. And our first priority always needs to be students and teachers. And when we do that, people will support us. And that, that's the strategy, is to be transparent and, and accountable. And when you are transparent and accountable, people are willing to help it.
What are your plans for ensuring the safety and well-being of all students and staff within the schools?
Okay. Well, you know, I have a daughter, and I have a grandson. And when people put their children on a bus, when they, when they drop their children off at school, they expect to pick their children up or to see their children get off the bus better than when they put them on the bus. Now, they might be a little sweaty or a little dirty, but they expect them to be better than when they put them. And we want them to be better than when we, we got them. And we need to look at the strategies that we are taking in order to keep our kids safe. And that means we need to look at what can we do, number one, that doesn't cost us money. We need to make sure that everybody is signing in and signing out. When I am the board chair, and I go to visit a school, and I plan on visiting schools, we need to make sure that I sign in and show my ID every school that I sign into. Even though they know who I am, they need, we need to have an account of every person that signs in. Another thing that the former superintendent did not seem to find important, and the answer that I was given when I inquired about it was, oh, these people aren't going to be alone with students, so therefore they don't need a background check. Yes, they do. Every person that's on that campus needs to have a background. That is first line of defense for our kids, you know, people who are doing construction. Everybody that has a contract with us must have a background check. Now, of course, you're not going to do that with parents, but if they're going to be on our campus for any amount of time, doing a contract, working on their schools, they need to have a background check. Uh, but getting back to signing in and signing out, that doesn't cost us a dime to show your ID. It doesn't cost a dime. We need to have a teacher at, at a door, any, any exterior door. Every time that we're changing classes, we need to have a teacher at every door. Doors do not need to be propped open for any reason. That is, if you will look back to any tragedy in the United States, most of them have been because doors have been propped open. See, these are things that don't cost us money. We paid $100,000 for a license plate. And I can't figure out how that is helping us safety-wise. Um, so when we're, when we're spending money on things like that, when we can be implementing things that are free, it confuses me. So I want to implement things that do not cost us money, safety measures that do not cost us money. Now, we have hired a new safety coordinator, and I hope that we can, we can work with him. We can collaborate with him and get him to see these things, these items that we can do that cost absolutely no money to keep our students safe, because it's the little things. It is the details that are going to keep our kids safe. It is everybody being on their toes that keep our kids safe. I would like to say that we don't need to do these things, but we don't live in a world that we don't have to do these things. But, but just the small things that will keep our kids safe that don't cost us money. That's what we need to do.
How do you plan to address bullying and create a positive school climate?
Bullying is, bullying is an age-old issue. I remember bullying when I went to school back in 1482. Um, and it is something, it, I believe it's gotten worse. Um, especially with technology. It is so easy. You know, when I went to school, we had to do it to each other's face. You know, um, and I believe it's gotten worse with technology, because it is so easy to bully sitting behind the keyboard. I think we need to educate parents, and I think parents need to know about apps, because there are apps where, that look like calculators, but they're not. They're messaging apps. Um, and we need to educate parents, but not only do we need to educate parents, we need parents to check their, their students' phones. We need parents to take up their phones at nighttime. We need parents to not have computers in children's rooms. And we need to educate our parents on cyberbullying. And then we need to have administrators who are willing to address this and say, we're not doing this. We're not going to do this. And I served as Alabama's ombudsman. And what that is, and people are like, what is an ombudsman? A lot of people don't know, is I settled, um, when people had disputes. And that's grown people, um, which made me very, a very direct person. Um, and that's when people were very angry with one another, and they would come in, and I would have to settle disputes with the grown people. Let me tell you, grown people do not mind squabbling. So sometimes you have to sit people down in the same room, and you would not believe when people sit down in the same room, and when they were literally bullying one another, they can come out as friends, because they just need to get those very heavy feelings out. Well, what people don't understand about children is they feel those feelings so much more than grownups, and they're very real feelings. Um, so we do need to get a, we do need to have our counselors. Our, we have social workers in some schools. We do need to get them prepared to talk to students and really become the ombudsman of bullying. Um, and talking, getting them to talk when we have serious issues of, of bullying, listening to the parents and realizing that this is not, this is not something that we just say, oh, it's just a bunch of kids. We, we need them to get involved. We need the schools to get involved and say, we're not doing this. Let's, let's sit down. Let's talk about it. Let's talk it through. Because we do, even as adults, have problems talking it through. You know, there are people recently who have had problems with me talking about hard truths. And if people would call and talk to me, they would realize that the problem all started with the former superintendent not sitting down and just having a conversation with me, just ignoring me altogether. And so, um, had that conversation happened, I wouldn't have had to go to social media. Um, so, um, it's just all a matter of sitting down and talking, and talking things through.
How do you plan to engage parents in the local community in the educational process?
That is a difficult question, because traditionally, in the lower grades, parents want to be engaged. But when you get to grade seven, grade seven through 12, children want people to believe that they were hatched and that they don't, they don't have parents. And parents are more than willing to allow their, their students this. And say, okay, I'm busy. It's fine. But something that we did in the past is we had open houses in churches, because we have churches who are already involved in our schools, and they are willing to do anything for us. So we went to where the parents were. We offered hot dogs. I remember my husband, um, grilling 1,000 hot dogs. And, you know, parents coming because we were feeding them. Um, if we have to do that, I'm willing to collaborate with the, the new superintendent. And if we, sometimes people think that parents don't come because they're bad parents. That's not true. We have parents in Dothan City Schools that I know for a fact they don't have transportation, and they have to take that. Well, they're already fighting poverty. They're working, but they don't have the extra money to take those taxis to school for an open house at the time in which we dictate. They don't have time. I mean, they don't have the money or the time, because they're working three to 11. They don't work a nine to five. They don't work an eight. They're working three to 11. They're working on, you know, the night shift. They are, um, it's not that they're bad parents. It's that we are so rigid with our schedule. So maybe we, we schedule it differently. Maybe we go to where they are. Maybe we try to meet the parents where they are. Or maybe we even, they, we do a, we do a team meeting. We do a, we do a Zoom meeting. We have so much technology that we have to think, you know, let's think outside the box. Let's meet those parents where they are, because a lot of parents are working two, two jobs, sometimes three jobs, just to keep a ceiling over their children's head. It's not that they're bad. And a lot of parents may have had a bad experience at school. Why would they want to come back and see us? So we have to meet them where they are. And if that's what it takes, that's what we do, because we are here to serve those children and their parents. We are not here to, to do what's comfortable for teachers and, and administrators. And we are there to serve the students. It's all about student. And when we are serving students, we are giving our schools back to the citizens. And that's what it's all about. And that's what it's all about. And when we are doing that, school becomes so satisfying. Teachers, administrators, or everyone involved. And that's what it's all about. It's that passion. And everyone wants to get involved with something that's successful. When, and let me tell you something, Nick Saban said this. He said, you know, because I'm a sport, I really am. Um, he said, mediocre people don't like excellent people. And excellent people don't like mediocre people. No, I'm perfect. But when you get a school that's excellent and you get a school that's going all out for its citizens, people want to get involved. And as the chairperson, I absolutely intend to work with our, with our new superintendent. And I expect Dothan City Schools within three years. Now, it takes three years to make systemic change. Within three years, I, I expect Dothan City to be excellent. And I expect to work hard. Now, I, I've already, um, committed to donating any salary that I make, which is a small salary, I think it's three hundred dollars, to schools. I'm not going to up the salary. Um, and so the strategy is going to be whatever we have to do to meet those parents where they are. Because it is all about their students. I don't care if you come from District One or District Six or District Three. We are going to meet you where you are and whatever you need. All you have to do is reach out because I'm going to take every phone call, every email, every Facebook message, every text, and I'm going to answer you back. Because we are here to serve you. This is your school. I'm getting it back to you. So if you want to be involved in the school system, you're going to be involved. Even if it's just, I want to be involved for my child. I don't want to, I don't want to be involved in a fundraiser. I don't want to be involved. I just want to be involved as far as my child. We're going to get the school system back to you, to your level of comfort. So that's, that's my strategy.
What is your plan for improving services and support for students with special needs?
Well, first of all, it's the law. And we have to follow the law. Um, and we have an incredible group of special education. And they love their students. But they have not been given the resources that they need. We have got to look at our budget. We have got to get the resources back to the students. And that's, that's what we need to do, period.
What is your plan to address the condition of school facilities, including maintenance and upgrades?
We have some old schools. Um, BPA, which is the old Dothan High, was built in nineteen eleven. Um, I had an aunt who was the valedictorian in nineteen forty nine. Um, it's an old school. Um, we, I remember when Terry Collins, um, was, um, I taught with him and then he was my assistant principal. Um, he oversaw the upgrades to that building. Um, and even upgrades take planning. You can't just wake up one day and say, we're going to upgrade a school. It takes planning. It takes input from the community. It takes input from the commission, Chamber of Commerce, the community. Because people love Dothan, you know, the old Dothan High School. People love that building. So you have to take into consideration the emotions behind things of that nature. Um, but you also have to take into consideration that we have very large subdivisions being built. That we are going in the next five to 10 years to need a new school. So that means that right now, we have to start planning for a new school. That is not something that you just say, you know, I, I think I'm going to build a new school today. So we're going to have it ready next year. Just like you don't open a new school within a year. Because a lot of emotions from the community are involved in that. Um, so the plan would always be to include everyone involved, parents, the commission. And I've already had some of these conversations with commissioners. So you talk to the commission, you talk to the chamber, you talk with, um, parents, students, teachers, everyone involved. But the other thing that I want to break out, I've mentioned this before to you, is, you know, I've worked with every school system in, in, in the state. And I've seen them, number one, students need to be proud of where they go to school. And I have seen old, old, old buildings because the community wants to keep those buildings. But those buildings are clean and the window coverings are up kept. Or, and the lighting is maintained. And so, and the buil- buildings are clean. And so the students are proud of their school. But then I have seen brand new buildings that are filthy. And the window coverings are broken and the, the lights are, some are out and some are broken. And the students are not proud of their surroundings. Um, so keeping them clean and well maintained is something that we, we must do. Um, so, so that's another strategy. So the maintenance, keeping them well maintained and clean. Students will be proud of where, where they go to school. And then, you know, planning for opening. And when we, when we reorganize schools, you can't do that in a year. You have to plan and you have to have input from. When we open a new school, that has to be planning and it has to be a five year plan. It may be even a 10 year. And when you, um, even upgrade, major upgrades, that has to be input from the community. And it has to have, um, because you have to, you know, that is emotional. When we combined the two schools, that had a lot of emotions. Even from, you know, like for me, my high school went away. I graduated from North, my high school no longer exists. Well, you know, that was emotional for a lot of people that their high school no longer would exist. So you have to include the community, the students. Um, so that is so, that is such an emotional thing. And so, um, you have to consider everyone involved. And you have to plan and you have to have buy-in. And that means communication. And so as long as you're communicating and as long as you're bringing everyone to the table, um, and you're getting input, you can, you can get input and you can change the minds of everyone. Um, or at least come to a consensus.
How do you plan to ensure that schools have access to technology and tools needed to enhance learning?
Well, when I read this question, I was thinking, you know, most schools are on a five year cycle to replace their technology. And that is what's recommended by the State Department of Education. I would like to work with our superintendent to, um, put us on a lofty goal of two years. Because I recently bought a new chair and it's already antiquated. It's already outdated. There's already newer stuff out there. So I would like us to be on a lofty goal of replacing student technology every two years. But that means, again, looking at our budget. That means, again, being completely transparent and accountable and being tight with our budget. That means, um, forming a bridge between our technology department and our education department. That means getting someone in our technology department that has an education degree.
How will you ensure transparency in the decision-making process of the Board of Education?
Well, first of all, we have to be, there's a policy in the board policy and it is, it belongs to the board. And as the chairperson, I would like to work with fellow board members to remove this policy. And that is you have to jump through hoops to speak, to address the, the board. And that policy is ludicrous. You should not be like that. If you're a member of the public, you should be able to address the board. If you are a school board employee, you should be able to address the board. You should not have to jump through hoops to address the board. Um, and I would like to address that policy and maybe change it. But I want to work with my fellow board members. That's the first thing. Secondly, and this is a, a law that came up in the legislative session this year. It's going to come back up this next legislative session. Um, is that all municipal, um, beings are going to have to livestream their meetings. Now, will it pass? I don't know, but I'd like to get ahead of that and go ahead and set up and work with our technology department and set up a channel to where we have to livestream our meetings. Because people do not come to our, they don't skip our meetings because they want to. They skip our meetings because they may have a small child like you. Um, people don't want to bring their small children to a board meeting because that is misery for a small child. Um, and then that makes it miserable for the parents. So maybe they can, people can watch our meetings while they're cooking dinner. Or while their, their child is watching Miss Rachel. Um, you know, while their, their child is watching Miss Rachel, they can watch our meeting. And they can be more involved in the board because we're livestreaming our meeting. And we are being completely transparent with everything that we are doing. Um, also, I want to make our check registers 100% transparent. Where's our money going? Why did we make that decision? Another thing that I would like to do is I want to work, um, and it says this in our board policy, that our agenda is, um, set with the board chairman and our superintendent. So I want to form a great working relationship with our new superintendent. So we can set the agenda. And I want to do a way, we have something called the consent agenda. And that tucks away many, um, contracts. Well, every contract that we have needs to be discussed because we have many contracts that create a conflict of interest. Those conflicts of interest are addressed by the Ethics Commission. And we don't need to have that. That is illegal. And what I mean by conflict of interest is, let's say that I have a daughter who has a business. And we enter into a contract with my daughter's business. That's a conflict of interest and that shouldn't happen ever. It should never happen. And so each contract should be discussed. It should be read by each board member. And conflicts of interest should never happen. And so the, the community should be able to read each contract. Another thing that I would like to see happen is when we post contracts, we shouldn't post unexecuted contracts on assembly. And assembly is where the board's business is, is housed. Each community member should see executed contracts because otherwise it's just a word document. It's not a contract. So executed contracts should be uploaded into assembly because it's not a contract until everybody has signed it.
Why are you running for the position of chairman? And what personal or professional experiences have prepared you to be an effective member?
Dothan, I was born and raised in Dothan. Um, and Dothan City Schools is ingrained into the heart and soul of my family. Um, my dad is a bus aide. Um, he, I started my career in Dothan. Um, all of my aunts, uncles, my mom, my brother and sister, we all graduated from Dothan City Schools. My daughter was a valedictorian in two thousand nine from Dothan High School. Like I said, my aunt, um, nineteen forty nine was valedictorian at Dothan High School. We have all matriculated from Dothan High School or Northview. So we have all gone to Dothan City Schools. It is in our heart and soul. Um, I have colleagues and friends who still teach. I have cousins who still teach. And we come, I come from a very large family. Um, and we are ingrained in Dothan City Schools. I love Dothan City. And I have, we figured it out that I had, I had taught 1,080, 80 students. Though we tease in my family that I have 1,081 children. Um, and so now I'm learning that not only are their children in Dothan City Schools, but some of them have grandchildren in Dothan City Schools. Because I always said, once a Turner baby, always a Turner baby. So now I feel like I have grandchildren and children in Dothan City Schools. And I feel like I owe them the best education that I can possibly give them. Um, that's one reason. And I love Dothan. I love it as a community. We moved back from Montgomery. And not only did we move back, we moved across the street from my parents. Um, and it's been amazing. The air just breathes better in Dothan. Um, and we love Dothan. Um, and it was always the plan that when we moved to Montgomery for me to work at the State Department of Education, the plan was always to come back. And so we are so excited to be back. Um, and running for school board was not my plan. And this is not for me. It is for the children of Dothan. And it is for to get, to give the schools back to the community. Now, what experience do I have? I started out as a teacher, Dr. McCarty, who was a very big mentor of mine. He trusted me when I was twenty-one, about to be twenty-two, um, to teach. And I absolutely loved teaching. I've always wanted to teach. There's no, I never considered any other job. Um, and so I taught and then I moved to Central Office. I loved the work that I did at Central Office because they allowed me to be creative and start going to faith-based communities to, to meet parents there and to, to do whatever I needed to do to get the schools out of school improvement. And that was exciting. It was, it was so exciting to do that. And then I was asked to go to the State Department. And it was exciting to be up there and be given all of those opportunities. I was the ombudsman and I was able to, to settle disagreements between people. And that was exciting to be able to do that, to be able to sit and talk with people and say, all right, let's hear your side. And now let's hear your side and let's come to an agreement on this. Um, I was the liaison between, um, DHR and Alabama State Department of Education and, and how we were going to get data to go from DHR to the Alabama State Department of Education. Well, then they said, okay, now we want you to work with neglected and delinquent students. And then how are we going to build a data system to account for neglected and delinquent students? And they allowed me to learn how to code, to, um, build a data system for that. Um, and then, um, how was I going to manage that program? They allowed me to do that. Then they said, now we want you to oversee that program. And now we want you to oversee that money. And that was, that was absolutely amazing. And then they said, well, now we want you to work on supplement, not supply. And that's basically, we want you to spend your money before you spend our money. And so then I got involved with the U.S. Department of Ed. And they said, well, we like your guidance. We want you to write our guidance. And I thought, wow, this is exciting. And so I started working with the U.S. Department of Ed on that. And so then they said, well, we want you now to serve on these three different committees. And I was able to serve under, um, two different sitting, um, U.S., um, Secretaries of Education. And that was exciting, especially one of them worked, his, all of his work was on equity. And that was exciting to be able to learn about that. And so it just seemed that the more I put into the work that I did, the more opportunities I was given. And, you know, I was able to see, um, and I, I saw one of your interviewees who said, you know, um, with our, with our financial things, I was able to see from the unique experience that, yes, reading financial reports are difficult. But I know from working at the State Department that there are only three accounting programs that we're allowed to use. And it's because we have, we have function codes and we have object codes and And that's because we are only allowed to use three different, three different accounting programs. And this is the way that we are forced to do it. We can't go and use Excel. We can't decide to use a different program. Now, Dothan City does use the most antiquated one and I think it's time for us to move up. But the reason that people can't understand those financial programs is because we're only allowed to use three. And it's not, but I'm, I'm able to understand those programs. And I'm more than willing to train. Anybody wants to use, understand how to use those programs. But because I was able to work at the State Department for so many years, I can understand those programs. But just all of that experience led me up, being able to run for chairman. And it gave me the unique experience, building, helping to build the monitoring process, helping to write the state plan for every student's needs act, helping to, leading the team for the data for career and technical education, writing the plan for the comprehensive local needs assessment that's still used in schools today, taught me so much about the career and technical education part. Because I actually spent three years working at the state level for the career and technical education section. So it just gave me such a breadth of experience that it set me up to be uniquely experienced for the chairman's position. And when Mr. Childers approached me for running for chair, he actually said, you forgot more about school than I've ever known. And, you know, I think it was that statement that made me say, okay, you're right, I'll run. And with that much faith in me, that puts, that's why I'm running so hard. That's why I'm putting so much into this. The other thing that I want to say is I'm funding my own campaign because I never want anybody to think, who is she beholding? Who does she owe a favor to? I want everybody to know that I don't owe a favor to anyone. I am completely 100% funding every cent I can. Because I want to give Dothan Schools back to the people. Because I want it to be something, I'm excited to know that with working with people like Ashley Davis and working with Ari Jenkins and working with Scott Childers, that we are all in one accord, that we want to work with the community to give Dothan Schools back to them. That's our role. And just the idea of being able to do that is so exciting. I mean, getting killed, but just the idea of being able to give the schools back to Dothan is such an exciting idea. And people talk about unifying. Yes, I want to unify. I want to unify so badly. But I do not want to unify about, you know, do you want to unify behind something? The majority says, okay, let's unify. But the majority says, I want to support this contract that's conflict of interest. Do you want to unify behind that? No, we don't want to unify behind that. So I will not unify behind that. One thing that I can say in my career is that people will say that I have always been a person of integrity. I've always been a person who's been honest in my career. And I will not unify behind anything that is illegal or dishonest. I will not unify behind anything that is not transparent. And I will not unify behind anything that's not 100% accountable. If we have to go behind this curtain and do it, I'm not going to support it. I'm not going to support it at all. So I want the community to know that we are going to unify, but we're going to unify in the open. And we're going to unify and be 100% accountable. Because we, the board, if we don't all get the same vote and if we don't all start rowing in the same direction, we will definitely sink. And that's not what I want for Dothan. We want Dothan to be successful.
Well, thank you so much for coming in today, Dr. Turner, and good luck with your election.
Thank you so much, Caitlin. I've enjoyed speaking with you.
Thank you.